Alright, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Sounds like it. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We got seven o'clock. We got a big crowd. A lot to cover tonight, so without further ado, Debbie with you. Thank you. And we will begin with flex.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, we have our consent agenda. Accept the motion to...
I need to approve the consent agenda.
Get it for move to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Move and second it. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's a five by ten nine.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay. Uh, we have our student representative next.
Um, so, uh, our fall sports have just ended. So, uh, the soccer boys team, uh, they lost to Wilsonville in the quarterfinals. Really great season. And the girls lost to Churchill in the first round. Uh, both teams had really good seasons this year. Uh, Cross Country did great at the state meet. They finished seventh as a team. Uh, and that's the best they've done in twenty-seven years. Uh, it was just awesome season for both of them. And then football just ended sadly last week. Or a few days ago on Sa- uh, Saturday. Uh, they ended the season ten and two. And they had a hard-fought battle against Thurston in the semifinals. So, the last four teams. Uh, winter sports have finally started. Uh, all, uh, all tryouts have great turnouts. Uh, swim practice, I think they're nearing to a hundred members, which is awesome. Uh, and also wrestling is doing really well. Um, the first boys basketball game is on December seventh at St. John's. The first girls basketball game is on December fourth at home versus Churchill. That'll be a good game. Uh, and then the first swimming is at Malala on December fourth. And the first wrestling meet will be, uh, uh, December seventh at the Per- uh, Perry Burleson Cascade Invitational.
And then a little about, a bit about our club. The Los Aguilas, they had a very successful tamale fundraiser at the end of October. And they have it altered in November for Dia de los Nortes. And they're using November to plan all their events, events for December. Interact Club has meetings every Thursday morning at seven thirty. The week of November fourth at eight was World Interact Week of Giving. The club gave two hundred dollars towards water filters in the countries that our parent club is sponsoring. They're also sponsoring two families this Thanksgiving through Saka by filling boxes full of items for their dinner. Many of our club members attend the Rotary Luncheon on November eighteenth and spend time learning about the different professions that make it Rotary. Interact is starting a fundraiser by selling Jamba Juice punch cards and Trader of Barbecue Rafflins. The Red Claws Cross Club had their first blood drive of the year on November twentieth. There is a large shortage in the West due to canceled drives and due to the North, the California fires. We had a successful turnout at our first blood drive and we'll be holding three blood drives through this school year. Skills USA kicks off on November twenty-first. Students will have completed their initial training and safety requirements. This year, our team will compete in firefighting, CPR, first aid, AED, crime scene investigation, criminal justice, welding, automotive tech, culinary arts, commercial baking, tech cake decorating, photography, video production, and career pathways. Their state competition will take place in March of twenty twenty. And then ASV is almost done with our yearly Tree of Giving fundraiser. We are halfway to our goal of five thousand dollars for shopping for a hundred kids in our community.
Okay, next up, we have our public comment period, the first one. We are glad you're here and welcome you to address the board at this time with your ideas, opinions, questions, concerns, or comments. Please be certain to sign in before you present. Remember that we all model the way for our students. We ask that you share your thoughts in respect of all. The board's role during public comment is to listen. Rarely will you get an immediate response to information. If there is follow-up necessary, we will direct our superintendent to do that. In order to ensure equity amongst speakers, the board will limit remarks to three minutes per individual. If a group of three or more wishes to appoint a representative to speak on its behalf, the board will extend the time for remarks to five minutes. A second public comment will occur later in the agenda, specific to discussion and action items of the meeting. With a crowd this big, I'm gonna point out as well that should we run into time constraints, we may also have to cut out some public comment. Because we do have business, we have to get done with it. So, just throwing that out there. I don't know how many folks are planning on actually speaking, but, uh, keep that in.
Chair, this is the board, first of all. We have some giving, yeah, we have a lot of calls. My name is Ken Hector Silverton. With me tonight, co-presenting is Leslie Kaufman, also Silverton. We have a fairly lengthy statement with a lot of exhibits. So, our comments will be somewhat summarized. And at the conclusion, should you have questions, we're happy to answer them. But you all get, uh, printed copies of both our presentations, as well as the approximate ninety pages of exhibit that are referenced in our comments. Leslie, vote. I do agree.
Tonight, you will be receiving a complaint that comes as a result of public records requests, as well as growing public concern regarding verbal and written communication between board members, community members, and members of special interest groups. Actions by board members listed in this complaint show a clear pattern of engaging in activities that do not work to serve the best interest of our students, our district, and of the public. These actions occurred behind the scenes, yet these board members publicly state clear support for board, district, and administrative decisions. Board members named in the records request have not fully complied with providing all requested communications. In the original request filed on July third, two thousand nineteen, board members transcribed their text messages rather than providing full text screenshots. And portions of email conversations were omitted. Upon further direction from the Marion County District Attorney's Office, additional records provided did not match initial transcripts. A subsequent records request also revealed that pertinent information has been deleted or lost in the transmission process. Evidence in the request also reveal an organized effort by a small group, including board members, aimed at changing the culture and practice within our district to further their own agenda. This appears to include ending site-based budgeting and decision-making, closing small schools, and mandating certain curricular programming, which may be contrary to student, teacher, principal, or site choice. These communications also suggest a theme of undermining or removing board and committee members and administrators who stand against them. In addition, they seek to further influence future board and committee membership in support of their desire to fundamentally change district operations. Also referenced are gatherings by this small group taking place outside of and prior to board meetings, where they engage in the giving and receiving of feedback about what will be said and by whom at the official board meetings. What is reflected here is entirely contrary to the platform of transparency they claim to champion. Finally, information found in the request clearly demonstrates that certain board members have worked behind the scenes with members of the public to influence the resignation of former superintendent Andy Belando, a steadfast supporter of the values and vision of Silver Falls School District. In addition, they continue to discount those who share these same values and vision. This overall undermining of leadership and community vision is most concerning given the legacy of exceptional high performance that our district has demonstrated and modeled for other districts statewide.
We, the one hundred twelve, under-signed patrons of the Silver Falls School District pursuant to district policy K L A R, hereby register the following formal complaint against board directors Shelley Neeling, Jennifer Traeger, Jonathan Edmonds, Janet Allenett, and Lauren McLaughlin. Public documents recently provided by the district expose conduct by these individuals which violate one or more district policies as more specifically identified below by the policy title in code reference, published in the Silver Falls Board Governance Policy Manual, the Board Superintendent Working Agreement, the Superintendent Employment Contract, Agreement for Confidentiality Covenants in Hiring, State of Oregon Public Meeting Laws, State of Oregon Public Records Laws, and State of Oregon Executive Session Laws. Violations include, among other things, pursuing personal vendettas against district staff by conspiring among each other and with individual members of the public to influence employment, utilizing personal email and text messaging for board business to conceal communications from the public, and failing to fully cooperate and comply with repeated lawful requests for those communications. Uh, I believe the chair said if we represented a larger number, that our time allotted was five minutes each. Is that correct? So, that's five minutes each, correct? Total? Again, this will all be in... So, you're saying our five minutes is gone? You gotta convince them. We have it. I'm sure the audience would like to hear what's contained here. It's your call. If you don't want them to hear what this is all about, I guess that's why we're here and what I want to hear.
Our policy clearly states you're to present for chair for consideration, and you have not...
Well, we can have this. One hundred and twelve of us. I guess we can have each of those come up.
If I may ask politely, how much time do you think you need to fit through?
It's probably gonna take me three, four minutes. I'm gonna summarize. I'm not gonna list the individual, uh, reasons to action. I'll just give the number, and with additional comment, everything else will be in what you get fully in print. So, I guess it's probably an additional four minutes.
I'm open to other board members' opinions. My opinion is we have a lot of information.
Thank you. Thank you. Improper conduct and policy violations are at fault. And again, I'll only give you the numbers. Member Neeling, improper conduct identified eleven. Policy violations, seven. Member Traeger, improper conduct identified four. Policy violations, four. Member Edmonds, improper conduct identified two. Policy violations, four. Member Allenett, conduct identified two. Policy violations, four. Member McLaughlin, improper conduct identified four. Policy violations, four. Requested action. The severity and amount of violations by Director Neeling demonstrate a deliberate and continual disregard for board policy and for the well-being of the Silver Falls School Board and District. Therefore, we request her immediate resignation as district, as director, Zone Five Silver Falls Board School. Based on conduct, policy violations, and for the future protection of the district, we ask for immediate censure of Director McLaughlin by the Silver Falls School Board. We also request further training for each of them regarding roles and responsibilities of a board member, board member superintendent relationships, and appropriate board member communication skills. Specifically for Directors Allenett and McLaughlin, we acknowledge that the above policy violations occurred before assuming their official positions on the board. However, given their board elected member status and their past leadership experience, they should have understood this behavior to be appropriate. Finally, based on the evidence presented in this complaint and from statements made by board members to members of the public, we believe overall trust in our current board has been compromised. The recent public information requests cited in this complaint contain incomplete email conversations and transcripts of texts rather than actual screenshots, suggesting the renaction of pertinent information. Furthermore, information from executive session meetings has made its way into the public domain. Therefore, we ask that Silver Falls School Board to request a thorough third-party review and investigation into board member conduct. Should this investigation uncover additional occurrences of improper conduct and/or policy violations, we ask for the immediate resignation of those board members above. Thank you for your timely attention to this matter, and we request resolution of this complaint based on the timeline dictated by policy K L A R. And all of the names of the persons under the code are included, and I will present the written, uh, information to you. Thank you for your attention.
I had it really close. Are we good? Okay. My name is Karen Darst. I moved to Silverton three years ago. I love Silverton. I have never participated in a small town or a community like this. If you would have asked me thirty years ago, I was gonna live in a town of ten thousand, I would've said, "No way." But I love it. I'm currently writing a book on homelessness because I believe that the citizens of Silverton can show the world what it's like to take care of everybody in the community. Two years ago, I applied to be on the Budget Committee. I have a PhD in curriculum and instruction, and I was executive director of the state bar. I was not appointed. They appointed three men instead. I decided to give ball in the elections to the school board. I thought a complete male member budget committee may not be in the best interest of the district. And I helped elect some of these people here. It's been a tough two years, and I applaud your effort in dealing with it. It hasn't been easy. When you have a superintendent who is well-known in the district who resigns, it's not easy to make a transition. But I am very impressed with their work and how they proceeded and whom they hired as an interim superintendent. And what I wanna really acknowledge is your participation in the community. To have this many people here, regardless of what you think, for or against, is wonderful. And they participated in the town hall meetings, which I thought was exemplary. Um, so, I just wanna say, I think it's time to move on. The superintendent, not everyone who supported him and who didn't support him, on both sides. I heard it. I listened. I'm retired. That's all I have to do. But I think it's time to move on. We have a lot of issues to deal with the kids. We've got a great school district. The teachers' salaries are below par. There's a lot of things we need to concentrate on. But trying to go back and say, "That shouldn't have happened," is, is not gonna move us forward. So, I could just say, I support the board. I know almost everyone personally. They're dedicated to the school district. They're dedicated to the students. And if you're concerned about something and an issue, speak to the issue. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Darcey Otter, and I'm here with my husband, Ryan. We've got four kids, one at the high school, two at Scotts Mills, and a three-year-old. And we are here tonight in support of all the K eight rural schools, and you can tell by the stickers we have. Um, as you know, these K eight schools are currently educating the hearts and minds of over eleven hundred district students. We have a wonderful and diverse district that spans over two hundred forty square miles, stretching from the valley floor at Central Howl to the foothills of the Cascades at Silvercrest and everywhere in between. I have two quick points that I would like to speak on. First, each one of these schools has its own history, its own culture, and most importantly, its own needs. Our schools, teachers, administrators, and parents work tirelessly to best meet the needs of the students.
Good evening, Silverton High School families. This is Wade Lockett, Principal of Silverton High School. Just a reminder that we will be wrapping up conferences in about ten minutes. Uh, I hope everybody has had a good night of conferences this evening. And please know that we will be resuming conferences at noon tomorrow. Hope everybody's had a great evening. Go Foxes!
So, they work tirelessly to meet the needs of the students at each building. These needs are met in a variety of ways. The most important being via site-based budgeting. The site-based budget is crucial for the success of these unique schools. Not every school in our district has the exact same needs or wants for its students. Site-based budget allows for specific and individual needs of each school. Your support for the site-based budgeting is essential for the success of our students. Second, in a recent letter from the district, it was stated that the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee will be moving forward with the option of closing any of the rural schools one hundred percent off the table. However, also at that Long Range Facilities Planning Committee meeting on the twentieth, the facilities report from VVO Architects indicated that it was not going to be cost-effective to perform all the deferred maintenance on the rural schools. Since these two pieces of information seem to kind of conflict, I was wondering if each of you board members could publicly go on record as if they support keeping the rural K through eight schools open for the long term. Thank you for your time and your commitment to keeping the best interest of each student and every school at heart.
So, we actually do have an agenda I have coming up discussing this. And I suspect, uh, I know I've had it.
My name's Danny Stevens. I signed in on one of the boards that was in the other room. You'll know me as a former employee of the district. I was also the person that submitted the public records request back on July third. Some, but not all of those documents are used in the complaint filed tonight. You will see other records at a later time. The correspondence discovered in your personal accounts do not represent an occasional inquiry from a member of the public, but rather in-depth and purposeful interactions. There is no explainable reason for your actions other than that you are attempting to hide what you're doing from the majority of the voters, and that is unethical. Forwarding board business from your Silver Falls School District account to your personal account is unethical. You have received extensive training over the course of several years. Every training has highlighted how you are to conduct yourselves as board members. And none of these actions, as documented in the evidence of the complaint, is supported by the trainings you have received. During a May twenty eighteen board meeting, Shelley Neeling states, "I do not feel comfortable sending emails. I like to do everything in public because I believe in complete transparency." That statement would be laughable after looking at the records request if those records were not so damaging. There were over a hundred and eighty records from her personal email account, and most of them had multiple email chains and responses embedded with them, within them. There are other actions listed in the evidence that are concerning. Community members list on her Facebook page that she manages Lori McLaughlin. This could be taken as a tug-of-cheat comment except when you consider this community member has been heavily engaged in the secretive workings of the board business based on the evidence in the complaint. A board member states that another board member needs to go. I don't think that's your role. Board members are plotting how to manipulate community members. Community members are advising board members how to sway other board members. Comments of, "Please make edits to my comments, but don't share." These are not chara- who are not characters in The Game of Thrones or contestants in Survivor. And for you to behave in this manner cheapens the importance of serving on the board. I would pose the following scenario to the board. You contact your current employer, and you give this person permission to speak about you to coworkers or to your customer base. And in these conversations, you give your employer permission to speak poorly of your job performance, to mock you and your actions, to call you names, and to plot how to undermine you. However, here's where the analogy fails. In this, you are fully aware of what is going on and giving permission for it to occur. A courtesy not extended to those people you have targeted, especially the administrators that continue to work in this district. I submitted a set-up public records request today because I believe your unethical behaviors are continuing. The last time I submitted a request, I was tagged on Facebook and in the line by community members. And speaking with my attorney regarding this, targeting and trying to intimidate me for requesting a public record could be seen as an attempt to silence a whistleblower. Your actions are unethical. You are conducting board business in private accounts and purposely not providing emails and the recognition and the documents. Thank you for your time.
Right arm. Here we go. Better? Okay. Here's what I wanna share after watching our lightly re-boarded after four months of business happening. Um, three months with the brand-new superintendent and just a little bit longer with the brand-new assistant superintendent. The word that, uh, that comes to mind for me is courage. Here's what I see happening that I haven't seen happening before. I see courageous conversations happening. I see you guys working towards consensus and actually discussing issues. That's brand new. I'm so happy to see that. I see really courageous conversations happening in our schools between our superintendent and our administrators talking on issues, for example, equity. Again, this is a topic that has been steamrolled before, and it's really exciting to see some progress taking place. I see courageous actions from this board and this community and our administrators. The fact that we had such fantastic turnout at the Long Term Facilities Committee is amazing. And the fact that our superintendent was able to write away a lase of concerns and the fact that he's invited since wide participation, that is new in this district. I'm thrilled to see it. What impresses me the most is that all of us are modeling the same for our kids, whether they're our own kids, whether they're the students in our schools. I see this being modeled with decorum, with adhering to policies and updating policies when we need to, with fair treatment, and with equity. And I'm very impressed with it. Any transition is hard. Any parent of a toddler will tell you, if that five o'clock witching hour happens, it is hard. Transition to re-board to brand-new administration that was completely unexpected, and we had very little notice to hire an interim superintendent. It is tough. But from my perspective, I see you guys. I see you putting the hard work in. I'm really impressed, and I wanna thank you for serving in what is very often a very thankless job. And I know the dozens of hours that you have to put in every single month, so...
We see you too.
I wanna see that, and say thank you.
Good evening. My name's Owen Von Flue. And I just wanted to stand up and, um, say that I've read all the documents that have been presented tonight. And I just wanted to concur with Danny's remarks and with the remarks that are in the plate and the tin. Uh, and I'm sorry I forgot your name so well. And I'm sorry, I forgot your name so well put. So, those documents do verify and validate the complaints that have been made tonight.
Okay, had all the public comments written? Regarding the complaint itself, would you be willing to give us a few options regarding sort of next steps? And our policy lays it out, but I know there may be some things as a new board chair I may not fully understand.
Okay, real quickly, for board members, when you look at K-L-A-R, which will be the process that governs any complaint that the board receives, we need to start obviously with receiving the complaint, which we have not done yet, we've only heard about it. Once we receive it, the timeline that we're working under is about 90 days from the date that the complaint is being filed. Within that, you have some flexibility in terms of how we move forward. It sounds like it could be lengthy, so one option would be to take the complaint, allow the board members to review the complaint, and then come back on December 9th and have a conversation about what next steps would be in terms of processing it, which would allow you to read it and prepare for any discussion or conversation in terms of next steps. We probably, at some point, normally we would assign it to either the board chair or the vice chair. We'd probably have to look at whom we would like to basically on the board kind of monitor and govern the process, kind of be our oversight from the board's perspective. And often, that is usually a board member that is not named in the complaint. So, or you could receive it tonight, or you could receive it tonight and then make a decision as to what your next step is without having to wait until December 9th. In other words, you can make a decision to assign it to a board member, have them kind of, you know, create the process. You could even talk about a process tonight if you wanted to. So you could go a whole gamut from deciding tonight what the process will be to reviewing the document and then coming back on the 9th and deciding what that process will look like. And that would obviously include putting someone in terms of an oversight from the board in terms of the complaint process. Okay, does that make sense?
Thank you, Lisa. So I think as far as, I'm going to suggest we can start a brief discussion. I'm here right quick. It's my opinion that I would actually receive the document and have it reviewed. I've not even seen the complaints against me yet, so I think it's fair that I ought to be able to look at it and be able to see what it is that's being expressed, and then we review and bring it back presumably on the 9th, possibly on the 2nd if we go ahead and have that. Still got to work on whether we'll read it on the 2nd, so. Anybody else have any different thoughts? Would you like to comment?
Hello? I'll just go ahead and agree with your thought process.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd like to do the minimum we have to do tonight. I'm still processing a lot. That was a lot coming our way. I mean, receive the complaint and do whatever minimum we have to do, but... There's seven of us and five were named in the complaint, so, you know, I'll put my name in the hat. Someone to receive it, I guess, or oversee it. Is that what you mean? Yeah, unless Erwin would like to do it.
No, I'm the director.
No, it's fine. Yeah, and I'm at a, I'm at a, um... I'm at a slow time of the year. Well, I'm slowing down very rapidly, so I can dedicate some time to it.
So I think that's generally consensus, and I don't really do have a plan. And thanks, everybody, for your comments. Appreciate it. Okay, we do have one discussion tonight. It's timely. We have a lot of folks in the audience wearing stickers, I can see. The Long Range Facility Planning Committee is the topic, and really, the discussion is around some of the recent developments. We had a survey that went out. We had some feedback that was sent to the board. We've heard myself sort of third-hand, second-hand, third-hand. We also had the kickoff meeting for the planning committee itself, which was fairly low-attended. This is just meant to be a discussion since there was that much going on, and giving folks an opportunity to speak to it, share their thoughts about the process, how it was handled, and how we're positioning the board. So if anybody would like to share their thoughts, just make sure you got the link on it. We'll make this dialogue a little more structured than perhaps we're accustomed to.
Okay, yes, I attended the meeting along with several other board members, and it was exciting to see the high attendance. And I think as far as the other details, and I know that there's a lot of concerns out there. I've had people greet me in the community about them. The rural schools, as far as concerns from the public, it's off the table. I believe Mr. Peterson has made that statement multiple times. Hold it a little closer, okay. But overall, I think it's a very positive process. We're getting lots of people involved in this committee, and it does look like it will be expanded. So, that's what I have to say, and that's what I experienced.
Well, I'll go ahead and speak next. So I've given this some thought, right? I mean, I've seen feedback ranging from, "I can't believe we sent out the survey", to "I can't believe you decided to take it off the table as far as closing schools", to "I don't think the superintendent had the authority to take it off the table. Why would he let him do that", to, you know, "I can't believe you're even considering closing rural schools", all across the board. I think if that showed any one thing, it showed that asking the question was pretty important, right? There's a pretty wide array of viewpoints out there. And I think under the surface of certain, if the surface for any proposed law measure is likely to be this question of the rural schools. I could talk about this for probably an hour. I've actually been upfront petitioning the board specifically on this topic in the past. I spoke out against closing Bethany before it closed. I spoke out against closing Monitor before it closed. It won't be any surprise to you that I'm not in favor of closing rural schools. I attended one. My kids attend one once a month. And I have absolutely zero intention of being part of any process that would be looking to shut down rural schools. I hope that alleviates some concerns.
Yeah, Jonathan spoke to it very well. As far as the survey and all the people that are now paying attention, I think it's great. I think the survey was a bold move, and I'm very glad it was sent out. It got people stirred up, so to speak. But now people are talking, and they're talking honestly, and they're involved, and I think that's great. This is a very important process. How we balance our long-term facility needs with the town schools, well, all the schools, the town rural. I mean, there seems to be that divide. Let's, you know, let's just, it's there. And it's important that we balance those needs. And I'm glad that everyone's now paying attention, and we're starting this process, and I think it'll be a successful one.
I think it's sometimes hard to follow the discussion because everybody's busy, but I do want to bring up the idea that the board, actually, the facilities, or excuse me, the budget committee recommended and the board approved a budget that actually increased our facilities manpower, person power, by a lot this last year. And it was a hard financial pill to swallow, but one of the, I don't know, ingredients in the secret sauce of this district is the small K-8 schools. And that was, those ideas were expressed when that decision was made. And I think that, as far as I'm concerned, that's where I stand. And I think the person who came up and asked if we would all express how we felt, there was like, not a time limit. I mean, obviously, our time on the board is limited, and I can't say 50 years in the future what that's going to bring, but as far as short-term, as far as I can see, that's an important part of our equation. The K-8 schools are a huge part of the success of our school district. So I just wanted to put those points of view in the mix.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with Jennifer and the other things that have been said. And I also want to call out Paul's process that was granted a little bit like ripping off the Band-Aid in terms of sending out that survey, and then even the architectural report, which was... You know, there was some tough news in there. That was a lot of data. But it really got the group sort of hitting the ground running. And the fact that so many people showed up and Paul was so inclusive of whoever was there to say, "Hey, here are the different sort of sub-working groups, and this is how we're going to move forward", I just feel very confident this is going to be a community-driven process, but a well-organized one. And so I think we're on the right track. I think we've got some difficult facility issues that we have to deal with, but I don't think anyone's suggesting that the answer to those issues is to close schools. We just have to put all of our best brains on it, including a lot of participation from you all and other members in the community to make some, you know, hard decisions when the things we want to do are more than the resources that we have. So I'm just really pleased to see how many people were willing to put in the time. Paul warned them, "This is going to be a long haul and a lot of work", and people said, "Sign me up", so I'm very pleased to see that.
I just wanted to say that, yeah, Paul did mention the sausage-making of this that's going to be happening. It's going to be positive. It's going to be difficult times. We're going to have conversations that we're not going to enjoy. But the one thing that got me very excited as the board member that was appointed to this committee or a volunteer, was the longevity of the committee and the commitment of the people that came from every single school. And when he went around the room and said, "I'm from Evergreen. I'm from Victor Point. I'm from the middle school. I'm from here", it was a meeting that I had never been to before where every school was represented. And everybody was cordial, and they wanted to get to work. And I'm all about the work. I'm all about the research. I'm all about digging deep and getting to work. So that's why I was very excited about the meeting on Monday, because we have to have these discussions, and we have to make a plan for our community and our district in the long term. This couldn't be a two-year commitment for this committee. That's how dedicated everybody is to making sure that there are plans for our community in the future. So I just wanted to reassure you that when I was there, I enjoyed myself. I liked the communication. I liked the discussion, and it excited me. It was very exciting. So if you have any questions, please let us know. Let us know if you have questions, if you have concerns. We are here for the long haul.
Erwin, would you like to share your thoughts on this topic?
Yeah, I just wanted the public to know that... Can you hear me, Jonathan?
Yeah, I think you're good there, Erwin.
That I afford all of the rural schools and their performance results. Even if it costs more, the results are positive. And I don't personally see or see ever closing those schools. They are such good performers. They bring the community together. That's why I can't without it.
Thank you, Erwin. So again, normally we'd kind of be having dialogue. Again, it's a little bit harder with mics. There was one thing that I wanted to make sure that I had made a point of, which is as to the timeliness of the survey, which as Tom, I think, rightly said, got a lot of discussion occurring, which was really good. The, you know, this was actually part of the strategic plan, was to look at the long-range facilities. And we specifically asked our superintendent, his name's right next to the light on, to spearhead this, and he got the conversation going right off the bat. And I'm really, really pleased to see so many people here and supporting the K-8 schools.
I got, I have, let's see if we started here. One more comment, you know, I'm from Scotts Mills. My kids went there, went tomorrow, and all rural schools and all that. And a lot of discussion right now is about rural schools. But let's not forget that the building, the educational building with most needs in this district is the middle school in town. So let's not forget that.
And to be clear, that was, you know, one of the things that I witnessed, I'm going to soapbox just for a minute, since I joined the board just a year ago, is a lot of underlying us versus them going on in the community. And it's really saddened me. I've seen it come out in a lot of different ways. And I think it's easy to find comfort in a group that you're comfortable with. The rural schools, everybody bands together. I'm one of them. Like I said, I petitioned this, but I do agree, we need to all talk together about how we can solve these problems. It's not going to happen by putting one group against the other. It's not going to solve them. And anything else on the current agenda? Suggestion was if we wanted to take a five-minute break before starting into the administrative and staff reports. Anybody else? Would you like to five? Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. Okay, we're going to... We'll go ahead and insert them. Thanks, Paul.
So we're doing an update on the strategic plan. So I'm just going to start with a little apology. My name's Paul Peterson, the interim superintendent. So for this next piece, if I turn my back to the audience, although I really want to talk with you all, they're my bosses, so I need to communicate to them how we're doing the strategic plan. So I'll try to talk to everybody. So we're about 11 weeks into the implementation of our strategic plan. I'm really pleased that we're providing our first update to the board. We are going to share with the board where we are in the work. And just as a reminder, this is year one of the five-year strategic plan. As I said, we're just getting started. And as I'm about to share with you, I believe we're off to a good start. We'll be bringing attention to many data points that reflect where the district is on our indicators that are listed in the strategic plan. By the way, the strategic plan is on the website and is available for everybody. And we are also pleased to be revealing the visibly upgraded and more dynamic view into our work and our outcomes. We'll be doing two more major updates like this during the year that'll remind us that our principles also include relevant data or indicators in the strategic plan each time they present at board meetings. One last thing, this is a new dashboard, really just created within the last 10 days or so. And it's a way of helping with sharing our work. Our team has worked hard on it. We're trying something new here, and so we really appreciate constructive feedback. So on our main homepage, if you pull down the district menu... So on our main homepage, if you pull down the district menu, to strategic visioning plan, continuous improvement plan, loads a page. And on this one, you can get a copy of our strategic plan and vision document. And then there's a link to the strategic plan indicator dashboard. So this is the big reveal for tonight. This is new. So we are going to walk you briefly through each of these indicators. This first page, where you see the green and yellow, this is just sort of a summary, kind of a table of contents, if you will, and this captures where we think we are. We use a rubric to score and to rate ourselves, whether we're on track, something is needing attention, or something is really at risk, things that we've identified in the plan that we haven't even started working on, we'll call those at risk just because we haven't started working on them. Doesn't mean we're destined to fail just because we haven't started working on those yet. So that's where we are. So as you pull up this dashboard, these are each hyperlinks to a little bit more information on it. So indicator 1A is on track, we feel really good about this, and we have some data in here to share. So this is indicator 1A, all freshmen will pass 100% of the courses. And I'm going to turn it over now to Jennifer Hannon, who's going to share with us the details.
Not all of them. I will encourage you to just click through it on your own as you have time, but as Paul mentioned, this is year one of the five-year plan, so our big goal for this first round is to identify exactly what we're measuring and where we are now. So some of it is baseline data, some of it is baseline data yet to be determined. So we'll take a look just about more how it works so that you can go through it in detail on your own. So the ninth grade, we, as Silver Falls said, we want zero Fs for our ninth graders. The state measure of that is they need to pass six or more classes by the end of their freshman year. So to the right here, we have what the state average is. So this is looking at the class of 2022, our sophomores, that's our sophomores, correct? So our state average is we have 85% of those kiddos have passed six or more each year. And for Silver Falls, we're at 97.9% by the state average. One of the things that we have found in Silver Falls though, because we're very high performing, so our margin for growth is pretty narrow, we've upped our measures by quite a bit. So we're not looking at kids who get six credits, we're looking at kids who have zero Fs, we want to look at all of their credits. So swinging to the left, our students, ninth graders currently, we have 85% of them who have zero Fs. Most of these kids, we didn't even put here what our current freshman would be compared to the state average, I think we're 100%? 97? I just singled out Johnny in the crowd, never mind, don't look at her. Okay, more than one F, 2% of our kids currently, and then with one F, 13%. So again, the state average would be only this little blue sliver here, that would be the state comparison. So we've got Silver Falls and the state, so that's how that one works. I would personally, I mean, you can scroll down if you'd like and look at each one this way, but personally, just so you can keep track of what you're looking for, I'd go back up to the table of contents and use the hyperlinks. So one I'll talk a little bit about because it's another one of those measures that we got a little bit of pushback when we worded it this way, that each student would achieve their appropriate academic growth each year, that could be a difficult one to measure. So let's take a look at how we're measuring that. So K eight students for last year, we did this for both reading and math, 67.22% of our kids K eight met their growth targets in math, but come all the way over here, there's, well, the didn't meet is 32.78%, those are the kids who didn't meet. So this entire chart on your right are the kids who did not meet. Now here's the odd thing about Silver Falls, they're unique, is group A, almost half of these kids are kids who are at or above grade level, that did not make their appropriate academic growth. So in, I know, right? So in a typical district, they wouldn't even look at those kids, but we have said, like our standard is that every kid, if they're at grade level or above grade level, we want them to get at least a year's worth of growth. Every kid deserves to grow at least one year. So half of our kids who did not make their academic growth actually are already at or above grade level. And then these groups, these kids, about 30% of the kids are, did make at least a year's worth of growth, but if they are already behind, a year's worth of growth does not ever get them to catch up. So we need those kids to make accelerated growth and they did not make accelerated growth, they made one year's worth of growth, that's not good enough if they're behind, right? And then these are the kids that we're very concerned about, this is 18.3%, not of our total kids, but of the kids who didn't meet, who are both below level and not making at least a year's worth of growth. So that's how that one works, right? So that, and then we have the same graphs we're reading. We do this for attendance and again, there we flipped it, traditionally in our previous strategic plan, we were measuring attendance rates, so our numbers were really high, 90s and above, right? But on this one, we're just measuring our kids who are not chronically absent. So our attendance rates are very high for most kids, we've got fewer than nine absences, but we want to shrink our percentage of kids who are chronically absent. So our focus now is on the chronically absent group. So you're going to see, we have needs attention all the way through on this one, 1B, the students who have, oops, sorry about that. It clicks right to it for you, but we have needs attention all the way across for a couple of reasons, because we're flipping our measure, also the state of Oregon has changed how they measure. So you'll notice our seniors, our high school students, like the older they get, the more their attendance drops and most people think, oh, senioritis? It's actually not that. If you're not in the chair in front of the teacher, you're counted as absent, even if it's a school-related absence. So if you're on a college visit or on a golf or tennis or basketball game, you're still, that counts as an absent. So kind of the high school crowd would be deemed for doing exactly the things that we want them to do, be involved in extracurricular activities. That changes this year. So this one is going to take some reworking for us. That changes this year at the state average. Another thing is with our 13 buildings, not everyone is coding things exactly the same. So for state purposes, it's easy to pull data in very general areas, but for us, we'd like to be able to internally say like, what's a religious holiday? What's, when were kids sick? When were parents excusing? When were they gone for sports? When were they gone for extracurricular activities? So that essentially is how it works. Paul, did you want to talk, oh, let me mention quickly, indicator 2 is all around social, emotional learning and school culture. So what we've done for that, each school has addressed that individually in previous years. So every school is monitoring their school culture with a variety of tools, but we don't have an apples-to-apples comparison on that. So we have, for the first time this year, engaged a company called Youth Truth to run a standardized survey for us across the district, grades 312. There will be a teacher, kid, and parent survey. And that will allow us not only to compare school-to-school, apples-to-apples, but nationwide and within the state of Oregon. So we think that will be a great tool, but we run that in February, so we'll be able to pull our baseline data in February following that. And then, so that's why you'll see planning is on track, but there's no, there's nothing to work with yet except at an individual school level. And then Paul, did you want to speak to Goal 3 at all? Sure. Excellent.
So as you can see, we're definitely building this. I'm really happy with how the charts and graphs and the ability to hover over and see additional data. Not everything sort of lends itself to nice charts and graphs, but we're going to keep building towards that direction, so it's really accessible and easy to read and provides really good information. So yeah, Goal 3, each school reflects, each school facility reflects the excellence of education in our district. So what I have on here is that indicator 3A, which was the Long Range Facilities Committee will develop a facility management plan for board consideration. We had kicked that off, so I'd say we're definitely on track because we started, but of course it needs a lot of attention and we will be giving it that attention over the course of the year. Indicator 3B is, community members are engaged and aware of facility issues. I think we've got a turnout here indicating that people are engaged and communicating with us, so that's helpful. And indicator 3C is school facilities are healthy, safe, and accessible. And this is a, this is a great one because it really lends itself to sharing our reports that we get. So we've got things like water testing results, radon testing results, healthy and safe schools plan, so those are hyperlinks on this area to other information. And integrated pest management plan is up for, actually supposed to be presented tonight. Lauren can't be here tonight because he's home, quite sick, so we're leaving on the agenda, notifying the public that we're considering this plan, then come back next month for approval. So those are just elements of having safe, healthy, safe, and accessible schools. So there's kind of a high-level overview of our strategic plan dashboard and how we're doing all those indicators. I'm going to invite everybody to take a look at this, bookmark this page because we will be continuing to develop and update this throughout the year with more information. Questions?
I had a question about the growth, the graphs that Jennifer went over. Is it the state test that those are based on, is there just the one indicator on that or are there multiple data points that we're pulling from?
Those are based on the Renaissance Star Assessment Program. So last school year, our K eight students took that assessment six times, this year they'll do it five times.
Thank you. And kudos with the Youth Truth, I've heard good things about that, thank you very much.
Yeah, we're excited about it. I'm going to ask everybody to join me in giving a round of applause for Director Hannon and the principals who all put a lot of work into this in the last year.
Okay, next up is the goal, yeah, the goals update for our superintendent and Paul will be here to present theirs one.
Okay, I'll report from here. I proposed some goals for my work back in September and the school board then approved those goals in October, October 14th. And so I'm just going to provide a quick update, I'm just going to read, this document should be publicly available, but I'm just going to give a quick rundown on each of them. So under Goal Area 1, which is communications and engagement, the first one is 100 school board site visits by June 15th. I said that, I marked that one in the yellow, which is at risk, because I have 32 of 100 completed. And so I'm going to be asking school board members to sign up to go do more school visits with me, we're in this one together. Next item was 20 board updates by June 15th, I mark myself, it's definitely on track on that one, I've completed 13 of those 20 updates so far, a little ahead of schedule. I even said I'm going to do 100 tweets, I've done 27 tweets so far. If you're on Twitter, follow me at @AwesomeSFSD. I only have like 26 followers, so I can do some retweets. Let's see, the next one is to do three newsletters distributed by June 15th, I mark myself as that one in the red, as highly problematic, just because I haven't started that work. I'm considering though whether to actually, now I'm considering whether to actually do that, since I wrote this, I found out that the Our Town publication does reach all postal patrons, does that sound right? So for example, I'll put articles into that, and that's a great way to reach everybody. So I'm just reconsidering that one. It's not everybody?
It doesn't reach all patrons.
Okay.
No.
Well, I'm interested in reaching all postal patrons within the school district. So I'll keep working on that. Number two goal area is implementation of strategic plan. The first one is establishing the baseline data and measurable outcomes by November 12th. Well, here we are November 25th, and I marked that as being on track. Really pleased with the progress we've made and the work that's been done so far to get that dashboard up to date and publicly available. Item B is a publicly accessible dashboard, I'll mark that as on track. A little thing to Derek McElfranch, who helped put that together along with Director Hannon and all the principals. And the next one is board updates in November, February, and May, so we're on track because we just did that. Strategic plan, report to the budget committee in March, I mark that as yellow, at risk, just because we're not carrying it, but I'll say that the work that we're doing right now with the strategic plan monitoring and everything, that prepares us well for the first budget committee meetings in March, if not having a budget committee meeting sooner to do some additional orientation and training. Goal number three, the strategic plan is my third goal area, which is each school facility reflects the excellence of education in our district. The first item is community survey to find out what people already know, to be completed by October 1st, but it's been October 31st. I mark that as green, on track, because that survey is completed. I didn't make it by October 31st, because the survey went out on November 1st and done by the 4th, so. Let's see, the next one is to continue to do homework on that, demographics report, facilities report, debt payoff and capacity, and information provided to the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee at the November kickoff meeting, we did that. And that's another area that is now updated on the website, if you go to, pull down the district menu, to school board, school board committees, you'll see one in there called Long Range Facilities Planning. And all of the documents that were provided at Long Range Facilities are all right there, all the survey results, all the data, the raw data, the demographics report, and we'll just keep populating that area with more and more information. Let's see, where was I? Oh, define the scope of work for a consultant slash facilitator by mid-October, behind on that one, but I did identify some steering committee people to help me get that process going so that we have a facilitator to help facilitate Long Range planning meetings. The next one is the expansion of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee to include more people in October. Yes, we haven't expanded that, I think we will be continuing to add more people to that process until we're sure that we have all of our stakeholder groups represented. We'll have each, the school will have, a subcommittee will have, just every segment of our school district communities represented on that. Kickoff meeting in November with parameters established, we did that one here just in today. And item F is meetings held throughout the year as determined in the scope of work, and I mark that as in the yellow, at risk, just because we're started, but we have a lot more work to go. And the last one I wrote was strengthening the licensed evaluation system of practices, I marked that as yellow, at risk, because we're, although we started on that, we have a lot more work to do. And I would say that the principals and all supervisors have been reporting to me that they are on track with all their observations, so that's good. And the last one is improve quality of feedback of licensed evaluations as demonstrated on a pre-posted staff survey plus administrative review at close of the year to assess the quality of feedback given to our instructional staff in a report to the principals by mid-summer. And I just marked that as red, just because we're still so far away from that point, but we're starting to have those conversations. So that's where I have my goals. Any questions?
Thank you, I appreciate it, I appreciate your detail as well. Anybody have any specific questions? Okay. Er, any questions?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have our financial report, Steve here.
On pages 8 and 9 of your packet, you have the two-page financial report, and this is also available online on the board book packet, online for tonight's board meeting, for anyone who wants to see it. General fund financials through October 31st. For the first four months of the year, we received 33, almost 33% of our budgeted revenues, which is right on track with projections. We are moving into, as we move into November, November's our highest revenue month of the year. the year. We receive at least 70% of our property tax revenue and 20% of our total general fund revenue in the month of November. And that's, that's been happening through the first three weeks. We've already received 73% of our current tax turnover. On the expenditure side, we are pretty much right, right on target with, you see the dials there with our expenditure, but you can't see the total salary and benefits are slightly below projection. The reason for that is because we haven't applied COLA yet. We budgeted COLA, obviously, but we haven't applied that to, on the license side, we're still in negotiations, as you know. So that'll be something that'll catch up once the settlement is reached. Other than that, expenses are on target there, so again, that's right where we expect to be except for the one unknown at this point, so. Sure.
I was wondering if you could answer a question for me. So I've had multiple community members approach me about the state and timber money that recently happened on Friday. They're asking if that could be, how that money works with the school system and if that does, or could you help educate us on what that means for our community or not? I think it was Friday, somebody mentioned, several people mentioned Friday or Thursday. I don't know. That's why I need you to clarify.
State timber money is the one revenue item in the general fund budget that is impossible for us to project, even when we talk to the counties. It, they can't tell us because there's open contracts out there and they don't know when they're going to close. However, state timber revenue is considered a local revenue source, just like current year property taxes, prior year property taxes, common school, county school fund, federal timber receipts. Those are all local revenue items. School districts get paid based on our total membership weighted, average daily membership weighted, so our enrollment plus additional weights times a funding factor, which is on that state school fund sheet that I show you about once every three months or when an update comes out. And that's called total formula revenue. Now, the state will then take the total formula revenue and take out what our projected local revenue is, which includes state timber. And then that difference, they'll divide into 12, and they pay us twice, double payment in July, and then one 12th payment August through May. So once, once everything's reconciled, once they get audit reports from all the districts, they'll do an adjustment the following May. One single state school fund year or budget year lasts 27 months. It opens up in March and goes all the way till May of the following year until it's closed. So if we get more local revenue than we projected, then they would do a negative adjustment in that following May, or if we get less than expected or enrollment's higher, they'd do a positive. So all districts are getting some sort of adjustment every, every May. So while we received more timber revenue in 18, 19, quite a bit more than we, you know, projected, that all gets reconciled out on the other, on the other end. You bet.
Any other discussion for Steve? Everybody good? Okay, we had actually several more items on the agenda tonight, however, we're going to have to postpone item D, healthy and safe schools plan, and item E, integrated pest management, as Lauren is unfortunately ill. So we won't be getting those reports tonight. Actually, we have copies of some of them, but we won't get the presentation. And we had also had on the agenda to have the superintendent's search calendar discussion and report from Sarah Herb. She could not make it tonight either, so we are looking to move that to December as well. And that concludes the administrative and staff reports for tonight. Next up is board reports. Does anybody have anything they would like to share?
Hi, just wanted to share some things that I've been doing in the past few weeks. I had the privilege to attend the OSBA November School Board's Conference up in Portland, November 14th through the 17th. It's a four-day conference, Thursday through Sunday, and I attended the afternoon session for the Learning from Alaska's Framework and a whole school, whole community approach to trauma-engaged practice. Specifically, I was able to engage in a portion that covered social and emotional learning. What is the board's role? Intentional trauma-engaged policies can help school systems and community integrate trauma-engaged practices and build social and emotional support. I was also able to visit many vendors at the OSBA convention. Some of the vendors I visited were Applied Windows Solutions. This is a company that provides windows for buildings in your district that are, that if you try to shoot a weapon or a gun at the glass or anything, it won't go through. And they have to try to penetrate to get into the glass multiple times, and it's a really amazing safety factor. So I talked with the representative there, and he was really informative about his product, and I will have more on that on my Facebook page if you want to read about it. I also talked to Tayer Incorporated, a privately owned company, who has been providing schools with local and sustainable food service. Wanted to get another opinion about food service and other companies and what they do and how much it costs. Recreation Today was all about playground equipment. It just felt like, felt good going to the playground vendor. And on Friday, I attended a general session. The topic was the hidden biases of good people, implications for educators and the populations they serve. This is a general session where everybody at the, at the convention attends. All the district board members and superintendents who are there, they usually attend them. The presenter brought, the presenter was Bryant Marks, a National Training Institute on Race and Equality, executive director and principal trainer at More, and he's also a Morehouse College Associate Professor. It was a really good presentation, and I'll have his presentation up on my Facebook page as well, on my board page if anybody's interested in listening. My next session I went to was building a communication strategy and community engagement around the Student Success Act. There were a lot of sessions geared towards what the criteria is for the money that could potentially come to districts for the Student Success Act. And I was really happy that they had so many sessions to go to so we, as board members, can, you know, make sure that that money's used the correct way in our schools. And our financial guy, Steve, can say this is how much we have and this is what we can do. So that was, it was really good. I attended the OSBA Regional Roundtable. That means that we all, all of us in Marion County, we get together to talk about what's happening in our regional area, which is Marion County. What's happening in our own districts, we learn from each other, and what, you know, other board members are doing, what superintendents are doing. It's really informative, and it's a great way to get to know other people in our region. On Saturday, the breakfast session was critical issues. Again, the role of the school board in the School Success Act, attending that. The next session I attended was the Title IX Compliance. It refreshed my memory on the requirements of Title IX in regards to class offerings, processes for sexual harassment complaints, and investigations in athletic programs. The attorneys from OSBA gave really excellent information, and again, I'll have a lot of that information up on my Facebook page if anybody's interested in the specific details of that. I also went to another session called Best Practices for Trauma-Informed Culturally Proficient Comprehensive Sex Education. It was very informative. The whole OSBA experience up there was very informative. I was happy to attend and meet new people from other districts and to continue to learn more and more about how we all are working towards the same goal, and that's to give our students the best learning experience possible and come back with supporting information for our superintendent and our, so he can do his job in implementing that at the, at the school level. After the comments, after the conference was quite a week. Monday, we had our work session here in the choir, oh, we were in the choir room, sorry. It was a good meeting, and I look forward to our next work session. After the work session, I worked, I walked over to the auditorium to join, so I was trying to join the town hall meeting the City of Silverton planned to have for our community members. Mayor Kyle Palmer invited the school board members to join in the important topic of equity and inclusion in our community. It was an honor to be asked, and I enjoyed the joint effort with the city council members and the mayor. On Wednesday, there was a bargaining session between our district bargaining team and the, our teachers' union, Silver Falls Education Association. I believe it is important to demonstrate support to our district administration bargaining team as well as our teachers and staff. We are all of us together. After that, I walked over to the library to attend the Long Range Facilities Committee meeting. I volunteered to be one of two board members to be on this committee. My role in this committee is to basically sit on the sidelines, listen, and report back to my board members on the progress of the committee. Board members on these committees don't get into the weeds of the information. That's the job of the committee. That's what their work is. On Thursday, I attended the first of two community input meetings for the permanent superintendent search process. It was a productive and well-thought-out meeting. That was in the choir room. There were only two community members there and three board members. So I'm really hoping and crossing my fingers that a lot of our community members are taking the survey online on the district website, and it's also on social media. So if you're not able to make it to the input meeting of the superintendent, of the permanent superintendent search, please take that survey online. We are going to use that information and use that data and speak about it and implement it into our long-process decision-making. I also have been with Paul several, on several school field trips. We, I went with Tom Bluecolts, myself and Paul. We went to Bethany and Silverton Middle School and Silverton High School. And it was a pleasure to go to those schools and have some really good conversations with the principals, and we got to see some, got to see some teachers and talk to them. And so it was really nice. And then the next one I went on was with Paul, and we went, just a couple of weeks ago, we went out to Scottsmills. And I missed Kirsten. She wasn't working that day, so I was kind of bummed about that. But we did get to talk to a first-grade teacher, Megan. She was, she gave up her coveted planning time to talk to us. Those of us that are educators know how important our planning time is when we have it. So it was very nice. It was a great tour. Stopped at Buick Creek, talked with Kevin Palmer, had great conversations about what they're doing out there and what their community is doing in their school. He was very informative about what they're doing with their grounds. He was informative about the seismic upgrade in their gym. We got to sit in and observe a class, which was wonderful, and this teacher wanted us in there, so I was very privileged. I felt so proud to go in there and watch her teach the kids. And we went to Mark Twain. And Greg Cotts gave a great tour. He showed us so many things about that school and what they're doing there for their kids and teachers. And he had a brand-new document that he has been keeping track, basically in real time, about kids' grades and the test scores and such. It was impressive, and I asked him if I could have a copy of it. But he is really digging deep in there at Mark Twain and doing work really well. So I just want to thank all of those principals and teachers and students and staff at those schools for allowing me to tour and taking a break to talk to me. So that's my recording work.
My week looked pretty identical to Shelley's, the OSBA conference, and then I think we had a total of four different meetings over the course of the week. So I won't repeat. She summarized it really nicely. The one thing I did want to say is one thing that I really understood very clearly when I was at the OSBA conference and hearing more about the Student Success Act dollars was that not only are they designated for certain priorities, certain programs, but they really require you to, when you put in your applications and you present your proposals, to do all of that through an equity lens. And so we're learning what that means as we go through this process with the state and with the Department of Education, who's got some great tools to help school districts make sure they, they are able to get the money that has been designated for them, and it's, it's a, you know, significant amount of money. We want to make sure that we are proposing things through an equity lens. So when we talk about equity in the district, it's not just because it's important to us and we want to move that forward on its own right, but because it means that we don't leave money on the table, that we get everything that the state believes is important for our district to receive. So that was really, really helpful. As Shelley said, there was a lot of information about the Student Success Act because it is a, as Paul can attest, it's a process between now and next year in this, in the 2020 school years when those funds will be able to be used. It's going to be a process that we have to go through in order to qualify for those funds. So that was very, very helpful. And I would second everything else that you said about fantastic speakers and just, we feel like we've come, come back with so much information and some really good tools to put to you.
Erb, anything that you'd like to share?
Yeah, I would, Jonathan. Last month, I had to personally take the day off of work and go visit four rural schools. Well, one of them wasn't rural, it was Silverton Middle School. But with Paul, Tor Todes, and he was more willing to go with me, and all the principals were excited to do their jobs and their enthusiasm. I was sad I was not able to participate in the convention this year. I think I've missed three out of the 10 years, so it's something I always look forward to doing. But even though I'm looking out of town, I'm still involved in schools. I was, I was able to go to a rural school, the only rural school I've ever gone to that had two cattle grounds crossing at the entrance and the egress. And I was able to go to support their FFA fundraiser dinner, so that was interesting.
Thanks, Erb.
You're welcome.
And I'll briefly mention that I was participating in the collective bargaining session last week. I'm feeling really hopeful, actually, you know. I said, teachers and administrators that are working hard mailing down these last details, and, you know, I want to specifically, you know, call out the work that Dan has been doing, Kevin Palmer, Steve Nielsen, Drew. This has been a group of folks that have been really thoughtfully looking into this and trying to move us all forward. Kudos to you guys. Appreciate it. Okay, if that is it for board reports, then we are going to move into our second public comment. This one is limited to discussion and action items, and the only action item we have yet tonight is the budget committee appointment. So there are two vacancies. Anybody who would like to address the board?
Hi. Wow, this is impressive. I'm Sarah Weitzman, and I've been attending school board meetings regularly since about 2014 and when Judy Field was a big issue at that time. And I continue to come almost regularly to almost all school board meetings for a while as a section friends of music group. But I'm speaking tonight not for friends of music, just myself. I wanted to thank you for the thoughtful discussion regarding the long-range facilities committee. Tom might well remember, I made comment a while ago that I was disappointed that it didn't get started earlier, that the committee was put off for a little while. And so I'm really pleased to see that there was such a robust energy and I wish I could have been at the meeting on Wednesday night. But what I wanted to say was that I really noticed that the discussion is thoughtful, your discussion is thoughtful, and that during this time that might be a little bit rocky in our district, that you've all had really good discourse. And it's clear to me that the seven of you want what I hope everyone in this room wants, which is the best for our kids, the best well-rounded education, the best kids-centered decisions, the best staff, the best equitable curriculum, the best facilities, and the best use of our funds. So I just want to thank you for your time and your care, and I really appreciate all your hard work and your extra volunteer hours. And I appreciate the service that you do to our community. Thank you.
Hi, guys. Thanks for your service. During discussion on the K8s, I didn't clearly catch a clear answer regarding onsite budgeting. So my question for each of you is, will you continue to support onsite budgeting or will you push to move to district-enforced budgeting? So please, just so it's super clear, I was just hoping you could each answer onsite or district enforced, because there's a big difference between the two. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I think that's fair. So the one thing I'll mention right off the bat is that it's, there's a little bit of a hybrid anyway, right? So we can talk about site-based budgeting, central budgeting. And I think there's, right now, what I would label as a hybrid approach. And there are some things somewhat mandated at the district level and sort of rolled out uniformly, if you will. And then I think there are a lot of discretionary decisions made at the schools. You know, I think there's going to be some discretionary. I certainly support allowing for local control. I think I support, generally speaking, having control over those dollars as close to the students as we can, right? Anytime you centralize things, you get further removed from people making day-to-day decisions. And I don't think that's the right decision personally. While I'm going to call it a hybrid, I do support site-based decision-making. Anybody else wants to speak?
Yeah, me too.
As a very new board member, I wish I could answer that question, but I don't feel I can. We've not discussed it. I don't have an agenda either way. I don't know enough to know the pros and cons. So, I mean, I could just say sure, but I feel that that would be dishonest because I don't know, I have enough information. We haven't started our budget process for me to sort of get deep into how we do that. So I don't need to dodge it. I just don't feel like I have enough information. But I have no desire one way or the other at this point.
Actually, I'm with Janet about this. I was speaking to Steve Nielsen, I believe, last week. And my understanding is that I need to know more. I'm new at this, and I want to hear both sides and I want to understand it fully. And for me to make a decision at this point without all the information and for me to review it, I can't make a decision at this time. So I'm waiting to be educated and have that clarified for me.
So what I'd like to say to that is, I think that is, as a board member and part of a larger committee, what I'd like to hear is from other people on the committee and how they feel about that and what the numbers are. We've never really discussed that at a budget committee meeting. It's never really been a topic. And so I want to get more information. I don't like to solely say something that, I'm going to say, nope, that's it, we're not going to do that. I don't like to do that. I like to have a team. I like to get different perspectives. I like to get different information. And from that large budget committee, I want to be able to have discussions with all of those people to say, okay, this is what works here, this is what works here, this doesn't work, this works. So I'm not going to say one way or another, because at this point, I honestly don't have a lot of information about it. But I do want to hear from the committee. And that's 14 people. Seven board members, seven community members that have volunteered their time around the committee. And so that's my response to you on that. Maybe we can bring that up in the budget committee this year and explore that and dig deep into all the numbers and make sure that that's the direction that, you know, the budget committee wants to go.
I would say that I have questions about budgeting, probably always will, but I trust principals to make the best decisions for their buildings and also keeping an eye on the strategic plan. So I think that that is, I think that's what happens. And I think that, yeah, I personally have a level of trust in principals to make those decisions.
Erb, I think you want to...
Well, I think that was a question posed by the public, correct?
Yes.
We've got to be careful that we're not answering those questions like we said we would.
Fair enough. Just for clarity, I mean, we do have the option. It's not necessarily common, but I think in this case, it was an interesting question, very specific ramifications for a lot of people. Anybody else that would like to address the board? Okay. With that, we are going to move straight into our action item. We do have one for tonight. We are going to vote on budget committee members. There are two vacancies. This is a three-year term. And we will be proceeding under a process where we are going to all, excuse me, we are going to all fill out ballots. And as soon as we have two individuals with at least four votes, we will continue this process. And do I cover that correctly? Do I have that correct? Was I missing anything in the process? So with that said, everybody should have some ballots in front of you. I believe that we do. Please, certainly, we cannot, there is... So if anybody would like to have an opportunity to share something ahead of time that you find... When we discussed it last time, the decision, or at least my recommendation, was that when we discuss the votes, we describe why we did what we did. Okay. Any other questions before we go through the first one? Or does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I guess I'd like to hear from everybody about the candidates and what you find to be important, because I have some idea about who I am going to vote for tonight, but I am open to other perspectives. So I guess I'm looking to hear from other people.
Anybody who wants to share right away? I'm not able to see.
I would like to see Nicole Olivier-Lavas and Scott Walker appointed to our district's budget committee. Both Ms. Lavas and Mr. Walker exceed the expectations for our district's need of two budget committee members. Ms. Lavas has a bachelor's degree from Western Oregon University focusing specifically in business management that includes accounting and finance. Her service to the City of Silverton Budget Committee and her review of nonprofit organization budgets as part of a policy council for the Oregon Child Development Coalition solidifies the exact qualifications to be appointed to the committee. She is a brand-new applicant. She is a registered voter. She is not an agent, employee, or officer, and her occupation is spot-on. She fulfills our budget committee policy criteria. Mr. Scott Walker has a wide variety of expertise and satisfies a very specific need as well for our budget committee members. He is a program evaluator and budget analysis for 25 years. He has a master's in biostatistics. Served on the City of Silverton Budget Committee. Served on the Marion Soil and Water Conservation Budget Committee. He is knowledgeable with Oregon local budget laws. He lives in Silverton and has been a longtime volunteer in our district, which indicates to me that his direct contact with teachers, administrators, facilities, curriculum, and a host of other important topics is a big bonus to appointing him. One other unique and important fact that jumped out to me is his vision and philosophy to improve the trust and support of the whole community in our public schools. He also fulfills our budget committee policy criteria.
Anybody else got anything they'd like to share with other board members before we proceed? Okay, thank you.
All right. If nobody else is going to try to convince me, I will say that I intend at this point to vote for Dr. Creighton Holmes and Nicole Olivier-Lavas. I am interpreting the policy to say that the board may appoint budget committee members to as many consecutive terms as deemed appropriate. However, it would be the usual practice to limit services to two consecutive three-year terms. I'm going to stick to the idea of limiting to two consecutive three-year terms, although I really appreciated the service, or appreciate the service, she may continue, of Robin Welch. I think that her expertise in wealth preservation is useful in this endeavor. But also Nicole Olivier-Lavas also has similar background. And Dr. Creighton Holmes offered a very impressive application, and I feel like he really understands what the issues are in education. So those are the two people that I'm leaning towards at this point. But again, if somebody can make a great case, I could be persuaded.
I'm going to have a hard time persuading you. I was leaning towards the same two candidates for largely, almost identically, the certain reasons. So, yeah, I mean, if we're interested to share, that's where I was thinking. I wasn't able to attend. I was out of town for the work session where they weren't able to introduce themselves. However, I did watch through you, and I felt that Dr. Holmes would make an excellent candidate, as would Nicole based on her application.
Yeah, I intend to vote for Nicole, and I guess the main reason must be as I'm going to break our little, but our policy suggestion. And I'm also going to vote for Robin. She's a role voice, and it seems like we're getting out of balance on the budget thing with rural, just kind of that you want folks from various regions just to kind of spread the news and stay connected. And I think that's very important. And that was the point I was going to make. But so, yeah, that's my intentions for breaking that guideline, I suppose.
I guess I would say that that was something that I considered as well, and will continue to consider as we consider tonight.
Okay, with that, we are going to do our first round. Please mark two individuals and sign and pass it down.
Erb, this is Dan. I'll mark your votes for you.
Okay, we're all set.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going in just the order. I happen to pull them up here. We've got Jennifer Trager voting for Nicole and Robin. We have got Janet voting for Nicole and Scott Walker. Shelley voting for Nicole and Scott. Erb voting for Nicole and Robin Welch. Tom voting for Nicole and Robin. Lori voting for Nicole and Scott. And myself voting for Dr. Holmes and Nicole. Nicole. Yes, Dr. Creighton Holmes and Nicole. Okay, and so after the first round, Nicole is a unanimous selection, and nobody else received four votes. So at this point, we are going to proceed to another round. And if anybody would like to speak prior to it, feel free. Otherwise, we're going to proceed right to it. We are, in fact, just voting for one. Thank you. That's a good point. Actually, you know what? I'm going to change what I just said. We, I think we all need to still vote for Nicole. I want to make sure the final signed ones indicate the final tally. So if you go ahead and vote, we all voted for Nicole. Go ahead and fill that out and then you sign it, and then vote for another candidate, please. Okay, round two. And I'm only going to read off the one that is in the paper. So we've got one for Robin. I'm sorry, thank you. Tom voted for Robin. Erb voted for Robin. Jennifer voted for Robin. Lori voted for Scott. Shelley voted for Scott. Janet voted for Scott. And I voted for Robin. So I think that... We have two members. Robin was reappointed and Nicole was appointed. Thank you, Erb. Appreciate it. Okay. Okay.
Thanks for sharing. When I was doing my report, I forgot to provide another aspect of my report that I didn't want to miss this opportunity to do here. It's just a message about thanks and Thanksgiving. So in honor of Thanksgiving this week, I just took some time and pause from the work of strategic planning implementation, negotiations, and all of the emails to do something that's even more important in life. And that's to stop and express a heartfelt thank you to the people around me. I'd like to express a big thank you to the school board for participating in the town hall event last week with the city council. I thought the event was a success, and I applaud Mayor Palmer, the city council, and the city staff for facilitating such a well-run community conversation. And especially a big thanks to the student athletes, coaches, fans, and supporters of all of our fall co-curricular programs. I have really enjoyed watching our student athletes, musicians, and performers reflect on the best parts of each of us and the best parts of our community. This is a special place. And in this moment, I invite you to pause and reflect on how lucky we are to witness students achieving, growing, performing at their best. Thank you to our teachers. Are there teachers in the house tonight? Teachers standing, let's give them a round. Thank you to our teachers for making learning so powerful and meaningful, for going above and beyond for our kids. I want to say thank you to our support staff. Do we have any support staff in the house? I saw Vance. Let's have them stand up. Let's give them a round. Thank you also to our principals and leaders who stepped into the leadership arena every single day. I just want to take a moment to give a shout out to all our principals who all got a new boss this year. And as they have accepted the new challenges that often come with a new boss, they have stood firmly for what's best for kids in supporting the traditions of excellence that they, our teachers, and our support staff have created over the years. Any principals and other leaders in the district, please stand up. Be recognized. I'm likewise grateful for the people who surround me every day, including the district office staff, with whom I am honored to work alongside every day and for whom taking care of the rest of our district family is just what they do. I see you all back there. Let's stand up and be recognized. And thank you to the Greater Silver Falls School District community. Your support for students and our schools is inspiring and appreciated. I'm also going to say thanks to my family, Tracy, Evan, and Kate, for all they mean to me. To them, I say, you make life, you make life and living beautiful. I wish everyone here, all of our students, and all of our staff, and everyone who is part of the Silver Falls School District extended family a wonderful Thanksgiving with family and friends. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we are going to take a brief recess and then re-adjourn into executive session under ORS 192660B to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations and ORS 192660I to evaluate the superintendent or top executive. Thanks. All right, we're going to move back into regular session. There's one brief topic we need to discuss, which is the December meeting. We have one on the second and one on the ninth scheduled. Those we are sticking with, unless I hear any objection from the audit or board. You hear my audit. Agenda's still going to have to get hammered out, but I'm specifically trying to make sure that those dates are the ones that officially was listed. But...
Is the December 2nd a regular board meeting?
It's a new work session.
Or session ending? Oh, I'm sorry.
The work session will be the second, and the ninth will be the regular board.
And it's 16 days.
Cancel.
Cancel.
The month first, she was supposed to break.
I know.
Without any objection?
The work for me?
Getting adjourned.